All right. Good afternoon. I'd like to now bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council to order, and the first item is to adopt or receive the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, second by Counselor Arnison. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Next item is adoption of the minutes, regular afternoon council meeting of April 24th. Have a motion, please. Counselor Qualley, and second by Counselor Whitmarsh, all those, or in the areas of emissions. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And next item is to resolve a special close for items on the agenda and on table. Have a motion, please. Counselor Whitmarsh, second by Counselor, Counselor Arnison, anything to add? Seeing nothing, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. We now go to the special close. Reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council, and there are no, okay, we'll move on to, yeah, there are presentations. D1 is the MedWatch Greensleeves Program, and we have a presentation by Mr. Jason Hodge, Township of Langley Fire Department. Welcome here.
Hello. My name is Jason Hodge. I'm with the Township of Langley Fire Department. I'm presenting on the MedWatch document with Barb Stack. So, we're going to do a quick presentation and hopefully gives you a little bit of an outline on what we're providing to the citizens of Langley, not just Langley Township, but Langley City also currently. About ten years ago, I was in Kelowna and identified that this document, these types of documents, were being used in Kelowna, and nothing was being used here to help emergency responders share the same information when we go to an incident and allow emergency responders to treat the patients in a better and more efficient way by using information. The MedWatch document, the green document that's inside there, allows us to have all of pertinent information on one sheet of paper. Firefighters are relatively smart people, but if we can have that information at our fingertips, it allows us to be a little bit more efficient. It gives us contact information, it gives us medical, medical conditions, medications, and if there is an advanced care plan on someone wanting a treatment, a medical treatment or not wanting a medical treatment, we're able to access that information a little bit more efficiently. So, the document is on the screen in front of you, and it, it shows you the different stages of the document. The back of the document is the medication side, the one that's on the right, and basically, instead of people writing down the medications, we're suggesting that they go to their pharmacist and have the pharmacist print them off a list, and that's at no cost to them, of course. So Barb Stack's gonna speak a little bit about other information that's part of the MedWatch document, and then I'll sum up.
Thank you, Jason. So, yes, my name's Barb Stack, and I work for the Langley Division of Family Practice. I work with all of the physicians and the nurse practitioners in the community. When Jason came to us, it was really out of a need to have information that was easily accessible by the emergency responders, but also consistent from the time that the firefighters responded to, when the ambulance came, to when they arrived in emergency for those physicians to be able to care for, for that person. What we've done is, the actual Greensleeve itself has been around in Fraser Health for about ten years. The issue with this, with it was that none of the emergency responders, in particular our firefighters, knew about it. So, if seniors were filling these out, our responders didn't know about it and didn't know where to access their information. So, we've developed a bit of a program with this so that when they do arrive, and Jason will tell you about that at the end, where they're easily able to find the information that's important to them. So, what we also did was add to the package, besides the MedWatch form that was developed by Jason and some of our physicians, we also added some more information to get seniors in particular and/or anybody to start talking about what they do want there for their advanced care plan, who would a decision maker be for them if someone had to make a decision on their behalf, how to have a conversation with that person if it's a family member, if it's a friend, how to have a conversation with your doctor if you're concerned about what your future looks like with medically, and how to actually start an advanced care plan. Uh-oh, I clicked the wrong button. So, when we do go out and do these presentations, and we've probably done about forty of them out in the community and reached about two thousand seniors already, we talk to them about what their goals and their priorities are for health, you know, whether it is to attend their granddaughter's wedding, whether it is to just be healthy and be able to eat ice cream and watch TV by themselves. We also talk to them about what their fears are. Yeah, I know. She's heard the presentation. What are their fears? What are they afraid of? We know that the healthcare system is set up to save everybody, no matter what, and to some people, that is really scary, and so what exactly are they afraid of? What would they not want to have done medically in order to be able to continue to live their lives? And what are they willing to go through for more time to be able to go to that wedding or to be able to eat ice cream independently? One of the biggest reasons is because within forty-eight hours of being hospitalized, almost half of people over the age of sixty-five need somebody else to make a medical decision for them. So, what we're trying to do is get people to realize that if your family members or your friend or your person doesn't know what that decision is, how are they supposed to be able to make that decision for you? How are they supposed to be able to, to understand what your wishes and what your needs are? And so, we're trying to get people to actually have conversations. We do go into a little bit about healthcare decision makers and about the legal pieces of it, and this is because so many people think that an enduring power of attorney can make healthcare decisions, and they can't. And so many seniors that we talk to think that they have everything in order, but they actually don't. So, that's just for financial and legal decisions. So, we do introduce them briefly to what representation agreements are and what those agreements are able to do, and again suggests that there is possibly something more that they need if they want somebody else to be able to make that medical decision for you them, and if they want to name the person to be able to do that for them. There are ways that they can do it without naming a person, but then they wouldn't necessarily have the person that they would have chosen and possibly had the conversation with. So, the second piece to that is if they don't have a representation agreement, there is a form that's actually in there, it's called the Temporary Substitute Decision Maker, and it is a hierarchy order under B.C. law, so there is no choice that if they were to go into the hospital, if they did not have someone named already, that they would go down the list and choose that, the people that, in the order that it comes, so there really isn't someone that they can name off that document. The other piece to that is that often if they have more than one child, they do not go by age, so it would be just the children that are listed on there. The other interesting piece that usually gets a laugh is on the back of that document, you can list somebody that you possibly do not want to have to make your healthcare decisions on there. So, often people know somebody that maybe they don't want making those decisions for So, what we do say is, is who does know you best? Who would be able to speak on your behalf? And who would you trust to honor your wishes to make those decisions for you? And I usually share a brief story about my son last year, who, who at the age of twenty was going in for jaw surgery. And some people may think this isn't a really nice thing to do, but prior to him going in, we actually did have a conversation about if something was to happen, you know, what are your wishes? Because it is surgery, and it is serious. But what really happened is, after he thought I was crazy, he did sort of tell me what his wishes were, but he turned to me and he said, "Mom, you're getting old. What do you want?" And so, what really happened was that we had a conversation between the two of us, and so for me, the person that does know me best is my son, even though I have a daughter who I would share things with also, and I have a husband, my son is the one that would be able to make those decisions for me, who I would trust to be able, in a crisis situation, make those decisions for me. So, we're asking people to really think about who would that person be for them. The, the second piece to it all is that we are asking them to go and have a conversation with their doctor, and in the MedWatch folder, there is a, there's two Fraser Health brochures. One is the Medical Order for Scope of Treatment or the Most, and this is a way for someone to plan out their advanced care plan. If they are unable to speak for themselves and they lose that ability, that they would have already had this recorded with their doctor. And so, we are encouraging people to go in and have that conversation about what their healthcare future might be. This, this can change, and that's what we tell them, you may decide something at this point in your life, and it might change later as you age or as maybe your healthcare changes also. So, but it is a way that they can record this, and this would be accessible to the physicians in the emergency room also. The second piece to that is whether or not someone would want to have CPR performed. We often, it's great to have our firefighters with us when we present, because we often get a lot of questions around why would somebody not want to have CPR? And so, we do explain to them, it is only if you're hurt and if you should stop breathing whether or not they would perform CPR, and it's a completely personal decision as to whether that would happen. But we do give them the information, and we do provide a brochure, and we encourage them to talk to their families and also to their physician about whether this is a choice that they would want to make or not. Often, our firefighters do share some stories as to why may, you may or may not want to have this, but what we do tell them that if you do not have the documentation done and if it is not signed by a physician, our firefighters will have to respond and they will have to perform CPR no matter what. Often, we'll get seniors say, "Well, you know, I've told my family I don't want any of that kind of stuff." It doesn't matter. They have to have the legal form in place in order for that not to happen. And accessible, and if they keep all of their forms in one place, it is acceptable. So, we do give them some tips on, on how to have a conversation with their doctor, possibly bringing a family member with them, what are the best types of treatment for themselves, and what their healthcare future might look like. The other piece that we do focus on, and we give them a cheat, a little cheat sheet at the end with all of this information, because in a forty-five minute presentation, it's a lot of information. But we teach them a little bit how to start that conversation with their family, because it can be really difficult, both for the senior, but also for the family to hear it. Many of them will tell us that my family doesn't want to hear, they think I'm gonna live forever. And so, it is really important that, that they find a time that's, that's most appropriate and that makes sense to them, and they already have a bit of their plan laid out for themselves as to what was really important to them. Often, we have people coming up to us saying, "I haven't even thought about any of this." And what we say, "It's okay. Start what's important to you. What are your goals? What, what do you really want in, out of life still?" And also that, that you're preparing the family members or your person to be able to make decisions and speak for you on your behalf. And it makes it much easier when there is a crisis that they already know what that decision would be, instead of having to try and figure it out, and often there's lots of fighting that can happen within the emergency room.
So, at the end, at the end of our presentations that we've done, we do a summation, and this is basically where we're at with the summation, is, is what do we do now? Where do we start? Where do we have the people take this information that we've given them in about a forty-five minute presentation, and where do we go from here? So, basically, we ask them to start by filling out the MedWatch form. Okay? Pretty simple, pretty information, just share it, and if you can't fill it out, have a loved one help you with filling it out. Secondly, start that conversation. Start those conversations with your family. Basically, where this Greensleeve started is somewhat selfish on my part, is I wanted to be able to take care of my family and my parents. Wasn't in place for my father. My father, as Barb said, the no CPR form, he was the one that came to me and said, "I don't want CPR." I said, "Well, Dad, here's the deal. Fill out one of these forms, have your doctor sign it, or you have to put me in a bad spot to either lose my job by not doing it, or do it." So, he ended up passing before we ended up getting this presentation moved forward, but that was the whole plan for the presentation, was to try and help the seniors in our community. My dad was one of them. So, anyways, start that conversation with your family. Go to the pharmacist, have your medications printed off and attached to the back of the MedWatch form. Visit your doctor and identify if there's reasons to fill out the most or the no CPR form. There's various reasons why you would want, it's mostly on health conditions or medical Place all the documents, and we suggest that most of them be photocopied, and you put all of the original documents in another location, but put all of documents in this green folder. There's several places that you can put this green folder. There's magnets on the back that you can attach it to most fridges, but we tell people to put it in a safe place, and this is where it ends up being a little fun for me at the end of the presentation, is I find the most obscure place and stick it in a drawer, and I said, "Okay." I put it in a safe place. Do you think the emergency responders could find it? No. So, we go with the two green stickers. So, the green stickers, wherever you've put this, the first green sticker goes on the outside of that cupboard, the fridge, the, the drawer, the wherever that you've put it, the green sticker goes on the outside of the, of the, the place that you've put it. The second green sticker goes on the outside of your entry door. I've had the ability to speak to every Township of Langley firefighter that knows that if they, they see a green sticker on the outside door, to look for another green sticker or look for this attached to the fridge. So, every one of them knows to look for it, knows to look for the second green sticker. And then, we ask that it be updated as often as possible. If the medications change, if your health changes, or if any one of the documents change, change it in here, keep the, keep the original somewhere else. The plan with this and, and the plan with the emergency services is if we respond to the house and be able to find one of these, this will follow you to the hospital. So, the story is exactly the same from the time the first emergency responder got to you to the time the hospital is treating you. So, and they also would have your health, your healthcare documents that are inside also. So, it's not a guess on whether you have a most form or no CPR form. If it's in this vessel, it goes with you to the hospital, and the hospital's able to treat you as you wish with the same information that all the emergency responders have.
Thank you very much. I do have some comments or questions from counsel. Counselor Qualley.
This is amazing. Thank you for bringing this here. This is, I mean, here to our community. I know this exists in other places, and obviously, it's quite important to you personally, so thank you for your commitment to that. This sort of reminded me, when I, when you first started going through the process, there's a local vet here who's taken on an initiative to let first responders know if there's a pet in the house for people who are living on their own. A lot of seniors, obviously, are on their own, and they have a, a pet in the house, and their first concern when they're taken away in an ambulance is, "My dog, my cat, who's gonna look after it?" So, it sort of felt a little bit like that, giving them just another sense of, I guess, power, control over what will happen to them when they have to, or if they have to leave their house. So, I think this is a really amazing service that you're providing. How is this getting into their hands? So, how, how, how is this being distributed?
Right now...
It's a dog and pony show.
Yeah. It's the two of us and other firefighters and another lady that Barb works with, and Langley City firefighters that are actually presenting to anybody that will listen to us, for one thing. We were at as many seniors' facilities, that's where we started, was the seniors' facilities. We went to as many seniors' facilities as we could to get the program started there. So, now, it's just, every time we go to a presentation, there's one or two people at the presentation say, "Could you present for us? Could you present for our organization?" So, it's continuing. We're just trying to get it into the community as, as best and as most efficiently as possible.
And the other thing, just to add to that, is we have partnered with Meals on Wheels, so we have trained some of their volunteers to be able to go out and do one-on-ones with people, sit in lobbies of apartment buildings, and actually to the places that they're delivering the food. We've gone out to all of the Food and Friends and presented at all of their programs. We've done quite a few public presentations. We actually have one coming up at Douglas Rec Center on June the 12th. We've done one at the Senior Center, so as many places as we can go, we're happy to do that.
I guess my question was more relating to how maybe we could help with distribution of some of this. Obviously, we have a lot of seniors and family members who have seniors who are using our facilities in the township. So, I wonder if maybe at the end of this, maybe I could make a referral to staff to figure out if there's a way to integrate this kind of information into the, the kind of materials we pass out at our rec centers downstairs in the lobby, if we could find a space for some of this kind of material in our facilities, just to make it more accessible to people, maybe through our programs at the rec centers and places like that. It's just another outlet to get it perhaps into some people's hands, so maybe Mayor Frozel...
There's, there is a H2, there is a recommendation from seniors advisory committee, and it does talk about some of the promotion, promotional activities that the township could do, so I think when we get to H2...
Okay, so that's included in there?
Yeah, we can make sure it's complete.
Our major concern with trying to get this in the public as opposed to just putting it in for people to take is that we really want to make sure that they understand how the green dots work, because filling out one of these and putting it in a drawer, putting it in a cupboard, and us not knowing, us not having the keys on which we're gonna find them, is really tough. And that little explanation, these, these need to be explained. We were partnering with Fraser Health, and the main concern was they were just saying, "There you go."
Right.
Right? And not sharing that information and not sharing how we can make a difference is, is our major concern.
Sorry to interrupt, but your last slide there that had all the pieces, I wonder if that slide should be in this folder?
It is.
Oh, it is? Sorry, I didn't see it.
It's, it's wrapped up in the MedWatch form, so there is an actual slide in there. Sorry, just has how to do it.
Oh, great. So, I didn't pull all of these pieces out.
Yeah, there's a lot of pieces in there. That's part of the issue.
I mean, the, I think this is really great, really necessary. I just, it takes me back a little bit again, and forgive the comparison, but to the project with the pet in the house, and the, the vet here has created this really sort of long-lasting sticker for somebody's front door to advise of the pet. So, I just wonder about the longevity of the green dot on somebody's front door. So, anyhow, thank you for this. It's really well done, Barb. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison.
Yes, thank you very much. I think it's very timely and very important that you're bringing this forward. I, I think it's a wonderful initiative, and I certainly think that everybody could make use of it. I haven't had an opportunity to look through all the materials, but I did have a couple of thoughts that just came up during your presentation. So, the first one is, I totally love the magnet. I'll put anything up that has a magnet on it, and it's so easy to lose paperwork if you don't have it in a place that's attached to something, so that's, I think that's really great. And I, I know that, I assume this is more or less geared to seniors, but I'm thinking about people who have maybe disabled or incapacitated children or dependents in their family, and I could just imagine like a little family pack of these things, because, you know, if I find one with a green sticker, maybe each of them would have decided for their own reasons to keep it somewhere different, so that's a thought. My other one is something that people don't often like to talk about, and I know there is an independent program, but I'm wondering if this could include some information about organ donor information? Because if somebody is going to the hospital, that might be something that could be contained in this information that would express that person's wishes in that regard. And just a comment, it certainly is very helpful for everybody, the family members and the doctors, if you have an indication of a DNR that's already on file. It makes things so much easier when it comes to decision-making, especially in a crisis situation. And finally, my last point, I hope is a bit pragmatic. So, I know that the green dot is probably very cost-effective, but I'm wondering in the instance of it's dark, or the lights are out, or the place is full of smoke, if there might be some consideration for putting something there that was more illuminated or accessible when you're under adverse conditions like that, so. But thank you so much for all your, all your thought, that you put together a very comprehensive package, and thanks for coming and presenting.
Counselor Fox.
Thank you. And obviously, I was the one that encouraged this presentation, because these two wonderful people came to the seniors committee to make this presentation, and I thought the value was far beyond above what they, just the seniors committee. I do wanted to acknowledge a couple of things, other than the fact that Jason had the best grade six teacher that Langley School Districts ever had.
That'd have been, Senator Fox.
No comment. In a school that's now demolished, but anyways, we won't go there. But the other thing I wanted to acknowledge was the fact, and this is the root of the motion, which is coming later tonight, is that Jason basically has funded this strictly out of his own pocket up until now. And I do see the value of this above and beyond one individual funding it. I think this is an incredibly valuable program for all of our citizens as we age in place. Love to stay in our homes, love to stay in our communities that we grew up in or have lived in for a number of years. So, I think that there's incredible value in doing this and the discussion that this will hopefully evoke within families, because that discussion's a very difficult one, but it's one that's absolutely necessary, and I think Jason and his colleagues in the fire department, and I see Chief Campbell up there, know the challenges it presents when they arrive at a situation and the documentation's not there, or the decisions have to be made, and who's gonna do it, and how's it gonna look. So, anyway, a little bit of history there and a little bit of understanding, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I've seen this, I can't recall where, how I got hold of one of these, but yeah, there are other municipalities and...
It's on your fridge.
It's on my fridge. I know it's on top of my fridge, will never find it. And there's nothing filled out.
Yeah, the Greensleeve itself is around and around. It's Fraser Health-wide, it's just the MedWatch piece.
Just kidding, and that's great that you're doing this, so appreciate your presentation, and thank you very much. Okay, so, next is D2, and that's Truck Route Review, and we have a presentation from staff regarding amendments to the municipal truck route network in North Langley. Mr. Wolfing.
Thank you, Yourship and members of council. The, the purpose of today's presentation is to present the information in the North Langley Truck Route Review, as outlined in the report on the agenda for item F1 this afternoon. The recommendations that are presented here are based on a technical review completed by CTS Consultants on behalf of the Township of Langley. This review is also included as attachment A to the report. This presentation will be a joint endeavor, and I am happy to be joined by Mr. Gary Vlieg from CTS Consultants. Gary has served as a previous director for, of engineering for the city of Langley, as well as a manager for TransLink and roads and infrastructure planning, and he also served as a transportation engineer previously for the Township of Langley. In terms of the agenda for this afternoon's presentation, we'll look at the background to the report that's on, on the agenda. We'll review the history, as well some of the recent traffic pattern changes in North Langley. We'll look at the existing conditions of the roadways in North Langley. In particular, we'll look at the roadways around Fort Langley, as well as the roadways around the 216 Street interchange. We'll review the multiple account evaluation that was completed as part of the report in looking at the different segments of roadway for inclusion into the truck route network. We'll review the proposed network changes, as well as the associated costs, and finally, there will be a small section on the proposed next steps. In terms of background to this report, the township has a number of designated corridors within the community for the travel of trucks. These routes are identified in the Highway and Traffic Bylaw, as approved by council, and also published in a map by the township and available on our website. Additionally, TransLink also publishes a map of all designated truck routes within the region as a compilation of designated municipal truck routes. These routes are designed for heavier vehicles in terms of the pavement structure, as well as the geometrics for turning movements. Designated corridors provide specific routes for consistency in the municipality and avoid sending trucks onto roads that are not designed for their use. This provides a benefit both to the residents of the area, in that they don't have trucks coming into areas where they were not designed for, as well as a benefit to the trucking community in that they know that the roads that are signed have been designed for their use. The purpose of the truck routes are intended for longer distance travel. Deliveries will always be made, of course, on, based on the adjacent land use. The Township of Langley Highway and Traffic Bylaw has a section in it, Section 412, which describes where trucks are permitted to drive within the township. This restriction is for trucks that exceed 10,000 kilograms gross vehicle weight. They are required to drive on designated truck routes. Trucks that have a smaller classification than this, there is no restriction for, so this is only for trucks that exceed 10,000 kilograms gross vehicle weight. vehicle weight. The truck routes within Langley are signed typically in advance of the intersections where truck routes do change direction. The bylaw does allow for trucks traveling off the designated truck route for local deliveries. However, they must proceed back to the truck route as soon as practically possible. A number of items are here as background to this report. In 1999, TransLink was formed. Prior to that, TransLink wasn't in existence. So in 1999, we had the formation of TransLink. Included as part of that, we had the formation of the Major Road Network. These are a series of roads designated for intra-regional travel, particularly focusing on the movement of people and goods. One of the conditions of eligibility for the Major Road Network is that roadways are designated as a truck route. In terms of the traffic pattern changes within North Langley, in 2009, we had the opening of the Goldenir's Bridge, along with the subsequent closing of the Albion Ferry. And in 2013, the Portman Highway One project was substantially complete. This project originally had the 216th Street interchange as part of its scope. That project is now currently under construction. In 2012, council received a report with regards to truck routes within Fort Langley. This report reviewed the possibility of removing the truck routes within the community of Fort Langley, following a delegation to council. For continuity to be maintained, an alternate route was identified utilizing 240th Street and Rawlins and Crescent, and the estimated cost at that time was $4 million. There was no direction given to staff to proceed at that time. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Vleeg, who will review the technical report.
It's okay, do you need to pick up your- Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Your Worship, Members of Council, member of the public. So CTS was retained by the township to help them in terms of doing their evaluation of the truck route network for North Langley. A little bit of history to help council and members of the public understand where we've gotten to and how we got there. Prior to 1999, the Ministry of Transportation and Highways, now known as the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, was responsible for three key roads within the township, namely Highway One, which they still are responsible for, Springbrook Road/Highway 10, which they're still responsible for, and then Glover Road between the intersection of Springbrook and Glover, all the way north towards the Albion Ferry. So that portion of Glover Road through Fort Langley was under the jurisdiction of the Ministry of Transportation and Highways, along with the Albion Ferry. And that's a fairly key point to understand. I'll explain shortly in terms of the truck route network. So the ministry, by default, provides access to all of its roads for all types of vehicles under its jurisdiction. We contacted the ministry to find out if they actually established a truck route network anywhere, and they don't. By default, all roads under their jurisdiction are eligible for all vehicles. The only thing that the ministry does in terms of controlling what types of vehicles use their roads is to put a restriction on, based on weight, due to some structural conditions, or in terms of size, in terms of, for example, as I'm sure most of Members of Council are aware, for example, the Glover Road overpass on Highway One, which is a little on the low side and has this nasty habit of getting hit. The only other significant exemption that most people would be aware of is the Massey Tunnel, which is precluded from use by dangerous goods vehicles. That's the only thing that the ministry does. So in other words, I just, it's an important point, and that's why if you remember back from the previous slide, the map, Glover Road historically was a truck route network, a partner of the truck route network, because it was under the jurisdiction of the province. Another question that has come up frequently is TransLink's authority. TransLink was, is created under the South Coast British Columbia Transportation Authority Act, and is a creature of the province. In that legislation, it's very specific that TransLink has the final authority to accept any changes to the truck route network. So municipal councils can make changes to their bylaws, but those bylaws don't come into effect until it's been approved by the board of directors of TransLink. And I've quoted the relevant sections. So what have we got right now? The truck route network, as it currently exists in the township, is shown on the map in front of you. And we've got trucks on that. We, CTS undertook a survey of the trucks on each of the links where you see the numbers over a one-week period in the fall of 2016. I want to stress to Members of Council and the public that those truck volumes that you see in front of you are daily volumes, not hourly, daily volumes. So if you look at it, for example, 216th Street, north of 88th Avenue, has 28 northbound, 21 southbound, so a total of approximately 50 trucks per day. You look at Glover Road in Fort Langley, you're looking at around 240 trucks per day. So that's the order of scope. As compared to, for a lot of these road links, you're talking anywhere from 5,000 to 8,000 vehicles a day. So all the roads that we took a look at were two-lane roads. They were either under the township's classification system, either an arterial or collector class of a road. The posted speed was either 50 or 60 kilometers an hour. The bulk of them at 50. And truck volumes, excuse me, represent less than 10% of the total traffic volume. In most cases, most of the roads that were, showed you the truck volumes, it's more like 2% to 3%. But there were a couple of roads where it actually represents up to 10% of the total daily traffic So Fort Langley, what are we talking about in terms of the truck route network there? The removal of the Albion Ferry and the elimination of the ministry's jurisdiction over Glover Road meant that there, the only reason that it was a truck route is it was historical. The ministry needed to have Glover Road through Fort Langley as a truck route because of the connection to Maple Ridge. Therefore, it was a truck route. And the ministry, as I said earlier, by definition, has all of its roads as a truck route. There's very little movement of trucks east-west through Fort Langley. The trucks that we did count, the bulk of them are there for the sole purpose of providing deliveries into Fort Langley. So you've got various businesses, for example, the grocery store and others, that do get deliveries by trucks, and that will continue regardless of whether the road is designated as a truck route or not. So what are we recommending? Looking at the network, we're, I've got a map to make it a little easier for everyone. We're recommending removal of Glover Road from Rawlins and Crescent to the Fraser River, 96th Avenue from 216th to Glover, 88th from 216th to Glover, Mavis from Glover to River, River Road from Mavis to 240th, and then finally, River Road from 264th Street to the Abbotsford border. So I'll show it to you on a map, a little easier. Oops, sorry. Which is the map? Did we, one more?
Three.
Where did we go? Where'd we go? Sorry. There we go. So those are the deletions, just to make it easier for everyone to see. That's what we're proposing for the deletion. If I work my way east to west, the link shown in red on the, on the, our right, River Road to the Abbotsford border, the reason for that being deleted primarily is because there is no truck route connection in Abbotsford. So there's no point in having that, because it's just an orphan. Technically speaking, the truck should have to get to the end of that road and then turn around, because there's no truck route in Abbotsford. Looking at the portion to the left, or right through Fort Langley, again, if you look at the road geometrics and the road construction in that area, it doesn't need to be a truck route network, and there, there's no industrial area to be served by the truck route network in that area, particularly for Glover Road north of Rawlins. 88th and 96th Avenues west of 216th Street have been and are proposed to continue to be truck routes, but the portion between 216th and Glover is recommended for removal. Let me just go back. Sorry. So one of the things when we were looking at the road, that the truck route network was, as I mentioned, we wanted to have continuity. Make sure that the trucks don't get stuck at the end of a road going, "Now where do I go?" So we wanted to make sure that they could have an easily understood and continuous path, and we wanted to make sure that the trucks would be on roads that were designed to accommodate them. So in light of those deletions, then we're recommending the addition of three segments of, recommending the addition of two segments with one optional segment of road. The first is Rawlins and Crescent between 232nd to 240th, and then 240th from Rawlins to River Road. So you end up with some continuity of the truck route network, and then as an optional, 240th Street from 72nd to Rawlins and Crescent. It is optional in the sense that there already is a connect, there would already be a connection of 232nd Street from 72nd to Rawlins, but having 240th would just add a little bit of redundancy into the network. Moving over to the 216th Street interchange. The 216th Street interchange has been and continues to be a high priority in the Township of Langley's transportation master plan. It will provide additional access to Walnut Grove and to Willoughby, and in particular, supporting the development of, the continued development of Willoughby and the industrial area in the northeast quadrant of the Willoughby area. As council is well aware, construction is underway in partnership with the ministry, and we're going to be providing additional access for goods movement to and from the provincial highway network. That's an important consideration for the township. By getting the trucks to and from the provincial roads as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible means that we are avoiding additional degradation of township roads. One of the questions that was asked, or was raised, was, "Well, what about other interchanges in the region?" Well, staff have taken a look at the other interchanges, and almost all of them, with the exception of the interchanges that are primarily around high occupancy vehicles, so namely 202th Street and 156th Street, interchanges on Highway One, all of them are designated as truck routes. In the, in the area of North Langley, we still have 216th Streets, north of 88th Avenue, 88th Avenue and 96th Avenue, and Highway One are all designated as truck routes. So we're proposing, based on our review, the addition of the following road links to the truck route network for the township, namely 216th Street from 88th Avenue to Highway One, and then 216th Street from Highway One connecting south through to Highway 10. One of the things that we did was to look at what's called a multiple account evaluation. Engineers are often accused of being only looking at the technical elements and ignoring some of the social elements. Multiple account evaluation is a way to help address some of those things. We looked at a total of seven different elements, looked at the adjacent land use, we looked at road geometry, we looked at the road grade, in other words, how steep the road is. We also looked at environmental exposure, we looked at agency approvals, best practices, and we also looked at funding. So I'll go through each of those in detail. In terms of the adjacent land use, we considered things like, are there parks, are there schools, are there residences abutting the road, the proposed, our proposed addition? Obviously, with the school and with parks and other more residential type of uses, that scored lower. More rural and industrial areas scored higher. In terms of road geometry, what we did is we looked at the road in terms of, can the truck make the right turn or the left turn, or is the curve of the road sufficient to allow the truck to stay in its own lane? Similarly, the road grade, I think everyone can safely acknowledge that trucks aren't really great on steep roads, so try to avoid those. Environmental exposure, what that measure is looking at is, are there environmentally sensitive areas in close proximity to the roadway? For example, red-coated creek versus a green-coated creek, or no creek. And what does that, how does that have an effect? Agency approvals. Within the township, and within most communities here in the lower mainland, there's other agencies from other levels of government that we have to consult with and in some cases, seek approvals from. In this particular instance, the agencies that we were concerned with is the Agricultural Land Commission. There's a possibility that for some of the improvements, there would be necessary to get approval from them. Similarly, the Ministry of Environment, Department of Fisheries and Oceans, if we're beside a creek and having to make, move a creek, or move some sort of a water course, you'd obviously need to hit their permission. Best practices, again, is primarily around making sure that we had roadway and network continuity for the trucks. Did it make sense? Is it efficient? Is it, in our opinion, is it in the best interest of the overall community? Finally, funding. What we looked at there was two elements. One is how much, from a negative perspective, how much would it cost the township to upgrade the roads in order to accommodate the trucks? And secondly, is there an opportunity for the township to make application to TransLink for inclusion of the road segment into the major road network, which then means a positive cash flow into the township on an annual basis because of the major road network funding? The evaluation that you see in front of you, there's three types of circles. You've got an empty circle, a half-filled circle, and a filled, completely filled circle. The empty circle represents the worst case, and the filled circle represents the best case. And in the half-filled circle simply means it's neutral. Myself and my staff went through each of the links and based our assessment on all of these elements, and then what you have in front of you is the result of that analysis on our part. So what are the results? Overall, 216th Street has the best overall score. It connects between Highway One and Highway 10. It connects to existing truck routes. There's relatively few land use conflicts. There are still some. There are, there are schools, but we're not necessarily making changes, because the schools that do exist, that would be affected by the 216th being a truck route, already have a truck route beside them. The 216th also has the potential for inclusion in TransLink's major road network, subject to their review. Rawlins and Crescent and 240th Street, there are no significant land use conflicts, in our opinion. It helps to establish a connection to River Road and to the rest of the network. It does require, in our opinion, environmental and agricultural land commission approvals, or at the very least consultation. And there are capital cost implications. There are some geometric changes that need to be made to both Rawlins and to 240th Street in order to ensure that trucks can safely maneuver through those road links. 240th Street, 72nd to Rawlins and Crescent, it's only viable if Rawlins and Crescent, the Rawlins and Crescent 240th Street link is included. If it's not, then there's no point in including 240th Street from 72nd to Rawlins. Again, in our opinion, no significant land use conflicts. It connects Rawlins and Crescent to the rest of the network. And again, you would require, at the very minimum, consultation with the environmental agencies and the Agricultural Land Commission. And there are some capital cost implications, which we'll get into a little later into our presentation. So as I showed you this before, in red is the deletions, and in the light blue is what we're proposing for additions, and then the yellow is the optional addition. And again, in orange, at least it looks like orange to me, my wife tells me I'm colorblind, so I'm not sure, but the orange is the ministry road, and the green is the township's truck route network that's under your jurisdiction. Now I'll pass it back over to Richard.
So this slide shows the additions, as well as the deletions, along with the associated lane kilometers and capital costs of each segment of roadway. In terms of the lane kilometers themselves, the proposed additions are shorter in length than the proposed deletions, so we would be eliminating more from the network than we would be adding on to the network. This would result in a- This would result in a smaller network, of course, however, we feel that it is one that would have increased connectivity as a benefit for the community, as well as it would have slightly fewer lane kilometers. These extra lane kilometers obviously incur extra maintenance costs, we'd be able to reduce those maintenance costs partially as well. The lane kilometers that are shown on this slide are based on the four-lane designation of 216th Street, as shown in the master transportation plan, as approved by council in 2009. Currently, it's a two-lane corridor, but it is shown in the transportation plan as a four-lane corridor. The costs that would be incurred for adding 216th Street to the truck route network is shown here as at approximately $8.4 million. This does include the four-laning of that corridor, as shown in the transportation plan. This is not a cost that would necessarily be incurred immediately, but would occur as widening occurs on the corridor as traffic grows, along with the 216th Street interchange. The MRN revenue that is shown for 216th Street is based on the assumption that TransLink would add this segment into the major road network, and it is the per kilometer operations and maintenance costs or funding that the township would receive from TransLink with this segment into the major road network. It's based on just under $21,000 per lane kilometer, is how they base their operations and maintenance funding, is the current number. If this segment was part of the MRN, the capital funding to the township as part of the MRN program would also increase for the MRN as a whole, it wouldn't necessarily have to be spent on this particular segment, as well, any upgrades to this segment would be eligible for MRN capital funding. So we could utilize our MRN capital funding for the upgrades that are shown in here that are already shown in the township Langley transportation plan. In terms of the next steps, they're shown here, subject to council approval, in two main parts. The first part would be that staff proposed to conduct a public information session on the proposed changes, as well as initiate an application to TransLink in two sections, one for the proposed truck route changes, as mentioned previously, TransLink would have to approve any proposed changes to the truck route, and two, the application for the MRN change as well. This is basically a two-part application. Following those items, staff would then propose bringing forward the required amendments for the consideration of council. We'll take any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I have several councillors, we'll start with councillor Davis.
Thank you very much. Can we just, right off the bat, just go one slide back? And so that addition to the 216th, 88th Avenue to Glover, so from 88th Avenue, is that 14.5 kilometer?
This is based on the future four-laning of that corridor, so currently would be a two-lane corridor, so it would be approximately 7.25 kilometers. So this is based on the future four-laning of the corridor.
Okay, okay, um, okay, so that, it's, yeah, seven, from 88th to Glover is seven some odd kilometers, but...
Correct.
No, it's three kilometers.
Yeah, it's not very long.
But it's about three kilometers, but because it's two lanes, you double it, and then if it's four lanes, you quadruple it, which gets you to 14.5 lane kilometers.
Okay. The other thing, you had, this all stemmed from a delegation.
Yes, council received a delegation in 2011. That was the purpose or the precept to the 2012 report that was received by council.
Okay, you had a picture in the report, we have, I don't know if you showed it to us, but I guess, yeah, the delegation from, it came from Fort Langley.
I believe so.
Fort Langley gets everything. Anyhow, going back to the, the proposed, the existing trout, maybe, there's two pictures of it in here, yeah, there, okay, 248, so Rawlins, now, a comment was made, and I'm sorry, maybe you could clarify, milk trucks, if they have a drop or any other truck, if they have a gravel truck or whatever, they can go in on a non-truck route and come back out?
The bylaw within the township is such that the truck is supposed to get as close as possible to its destination on the truck route, and then it's permitted to go off the truck route to make its pickup or its delivery.
So that could mean a onsite call from a DOT? Yeah, if you get pulled over and...
If the truck gets pulled over by Commercial Vehicle Safety Enforcement Unit, then they have to show their way bill, and then it's up to the enforcement officer to make the call in terms of whether or not he or she believes that the trucker has made the right choice in terms of getting as close as possible to their destination on a truck route and then going off of the truck route.
Yes, okay, so this, these changes are not going to impede anybody's, if every...
No, it has absolutely no effect on pickup or delivery from any farm or any other business, legitimately licensed business within the township.
Okay, so on this picture, we have optional additions, a 240th. That's a real snarly hill down there, and any, like, it, there's ice on the road three times more than there is anywhere in that section. Is there any cost? I see in the report, it has it here, that it just shows the Rawlins and Crescent, the red-coated creek down there, but is there anything, any, does it stop right at the intersection or does it come up the hill a little bit? Or do you know?
No, it does, there are still, as part of the costing, we took a look particularly at the intersection, there wasn't a lot of consideration at this point for further up the hill. 232nd Street has an equally twisty bit at the north end, just before Rawlins, and trucks are able to successfully negotiate that.
Well, that's not coming from a truck driver's opinion, but it is...
No, if, if, fair comment, but I mean, at the end, there is, one of the other challenges within the truck route network, and it's my understanding from staff, that it's currently a proposed project, is if you look at 72nd Avenue, just west of 240th Street where the rail line is, the rail crossing, the, that portion of the truck route network is a particular challenge for low-bid trucks.
Low bids, yeah.
Yeah, and given the agricultural nature, as well as Thunderbird Park, there would be a number of low bids coming through there, and they would get hung up on that. So providing 240th Street, at least in the interim, provides a viable alternative for trucks to avoid that particular crossing.
Okay, so costs, I'm just going to come back in a second, but 216th, by having the overpass, the new overpass there, and by having vehicles come down to Glover Road, we've put some money aside, but everybody has to turn to go to Langley, but we're not, probably not going to now. Why would you do that if you wanted to get on Springbrook, you're going to take the, so the number 10 bypass? But what kind of, because I've actually seen a low bid on that and pulled track up one, I was following it, just pulled it, boink, and anyhow, so what have we got planned for that intersection? Because there is an elevation problem, railroad's right there, and, and they, we, about three years ago, we shut it down, and I think we spent $32,000 for a run, for a, for a lane, kind of a merging lane, and now the merging lane, well, it's about 60 feet long, it needs to be 600 feet long, and now, when the police give you a ticket, they park on that lane, and that's when they pile it up, so they make it even worse. So I just wondered, short term and long term, because you mentioned, because in the report here, I looked at the financial, and we're up to like four million, that's if we do this right now, and then the costs can, like, that's the first time I saw that, 8.4 million, and that's just for 216th, so it's like, we, you know, this is, is, by having the overpass or the new bypass, or the 216th and number one highway, that, that will maybe solve a few problems. So anyhow, I guess my point is, you know, long term, what are we going to do with 216th there? Just, just your opinion.
So the, the long-term plan for 216th Street, as identified in the master transportation plan, is a four-lane corridor through that area. In 2017, council did fund a number of improvements for this particular section of roadway, in particular at the approximate 7400 block where it bends the corner there, where the road dips down by the creek, I'm sorry, I don't recall the name of the creek there. We are looking at a project to smooth out that corner, as well as there was funding provided to initiate discussions with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, as they do own Highway Ten or Glover Road, to look at intersection improvements at that location as well. So those, those may take the form of a signalized intersection with left turn bays. Currently, there is a restriction from Transport Canada to ban the left turns out at that location. Obviously, that's something we would look at with improved geometrics to see if we can eliminate that ban.
Okay, well, I know four days ago or five days ago, CP truck was sitting there, and I was in my tractor, and I was just too late to catch him turning left. The railroad himself was turning left, anyhow, okay. Anyhow, so, sorry, I'm a little off track there. I'm just concerned, this is transportation. Are you working on, and maybe the question may be through to Jack, to staff, we have a report out on a delegation that's asked about 216th from Telegraph Trail to 88th, and we're still waiting back to hear from that. And it was a delegation, and there was two or three things. One of them was stopping a truck route. Do we have any, when, when will that...
This is the report, so it's included in this report.
So this, okay, so on the multiple account evaluations, we've got, there's no green in there on land use. So just, we didn't, there was, there was, we don't have anything on, we're just proposing to put a truck route there? Did we come to any conclusions about the, you know, I didn't see it in here, about the delegation? We're just going to put a truck route through, and we're voting on it today? Is that the idea?
I can answer that. We're not voting on the bylaw that would, that would put the truck routes in place. What we're voting on today is, will be in F1. I can also just clarify, councillor Davis, you'd asked about 240th, as, and it was identified as an optional, unless council decides otherwise, it's not included in the recommendation in F1 to, to add 240th and 72 to Rawlins, and so, I know you raised that, and I just want to make sure you're clear on that. Unless council decides to add it, it's not in the recommendation.
So Your Worship, perhaps we could clarify just a bit further, because you're quite correct that this is actually the direction for staff to bring the amendments to the master transportation plan back that would be directed from this, from this meeting. But I think one thing the councillor Davis came very close to identifying, but still is not very clear, is the jurisdiction of the township to prohibit trucks from departing from Highway One, and that is at any interchange. And I think Richard and Gary could confirm that we have no jurisdiction to stop a truck from leaving a provincial highway or freeway. It must, however, if it does leave that highway or freeway, go to the closest immediate truck route and proceed in accordance with the direction that they've given. So far, good? Okay. That creates the complication, so this issue of the designation of the truck route in the area that's in question, which is from the freeway to 88th Avenue, is a bit of a moot point. If council does not designate that as a truck route, it still remains for trucks to access and egress on that route, provided they're coming from 88th Avenue or those other points. We have no ability to block that. Our statement that it's not a truck route is merely our desire, the trucks limit their use to that, if you will, it's a preference, but there's no enforcement ability, there's nothing we can do to stop it from going in that area, it's just a statement. The statement, however, does have a cost. As Richard and Gary pointed out, the designation allows for a maintenance cost of $21,000 per lane kilometer, so in...
That per annum?
That's per year.
Per year.
So $21,000 per year, over 20 years adds up to be significant, so we're a bit of a, in an ironic position, that if the area is not designated as a truck route, the region does not pay for it. The trucks will still use it, but the region will not pay for that truck route for the improvements to that road at all. Instead, it'll be the local residents or the township residents through taxes that'll be paying for that. The irony is, is that of course people are opposed to the truck route, but that comes part and parcel with having an interchange where trucks can access or egress the freeway or highway itself. Is that effectively correct? My apologies to council, but there's a couple of key points that I forgot to raise in part of my presentation. As I'm sure council is quite well aware, part of the 216th Street interchange is the project, is the ministry is actually doubling the off-ramp capacity at 200th Street. Currently, it's a single-lane off-ramp, and they recognize that they've got problems at that location, so they're doubling the capacity at that by providing a second off, a second westbound off-ramp at 200th Street. So while it's recognized that, that there are segments of the community that are, have, are in opposition to these changes to the truck route and have some concerns, it should also be pointed out that the ministry has acknowledged that there's a problem at 200th Street and therefore is making capacity improvements. The other thing that is, and I wish I had a timeline for council, but unfortunately I don't, but it is within, as part of the overall transportation planning for the city of Surrey, is to provide a new interchange at 192nd Street, currently designated as Harvey Road, and which would also provide additional access into the Port Kells industrial area.
Okay, so as it stands right now, the delegation that gave the report, the delegation was on, was on sound and, sound abatement, it was the, no truck access and the safety, but they wanted to do something at the end of Telegraph Trail. I didn't see it in, something at Telegraph Trail to stop left-hand cars. Just quick, I know I asked that question, but, so, we, the municipality, a truck can come off there, and depending on the DOT's mindset at that point, he can say, oh, you're going to a truck route as fast as you can. That's even worse, because now they're going to come down, okay. So if there's a truck route there, if there's no truck route, they're going to come, come off the freeway and hit 88th anyhow?
That's correct.
Okay, well, jeez, you know, I, yeah, okay, sorry.
Your Worship, perhaps I could provide some clarification or try and respond to some of the questions raised. In terms of the genesis of this presentation, as Mr. Welfing pointed out, it goes back to 2011, I believe, where delegation was made to council to make changes around Fort Langley. That's how it started. However, over the years, there have been other requests from staff to evaluate the truck route network in north Langley, and as such, I believe, in fact, it was made the priority by council as part of their priority setting session over the past couple of years to do a more comprehensive analysis of, of the truck route network in north Langley. That's one thing. The second thing is, in terms of the specifics of some other delegations that came forward, they did not have necessarily anything to do with this particular presentation, but rather with, with the interchange itself, the proposed interchange by the ministry. And as a result of that, there was a report to council, not a presentation, a report to council that discussed several mitigating measures, such as a sound barrier, such as designation of truck route, deferral of that to this particular presentation, as well as traffic calming that staff suggested should better be done once the interchange is open and as part of a bigger consultation with the community. So those things have already been subject of a report previously sent to council. And finally, just to sort of rephrase what Mr. Leek said in terms of improvements to do on a street interchange, I would rather say, I think it's more appropriate actually to say, not improvements, but rather to now bring into fruition what was originally planned. So the reason why there needs to be improvement is because the 216th interchange did not go in as the ministry originally planned, when in fact they proceeded with the 200th Street interchange project. It was always intended for them to continue and carry on the highway widening, and, and the design of the 200th Street interchange is actually in consideration of the 216th interchange going in. So it's not necessarily fixing an existing problem, but rather catching up with something that should have been a long time ago.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks, and thanks for clarifying, I was going to ask the question on 200th, because I knew that was coming, so thanks for adding that. One more quick question, just kind of following up on councillor Davis. The 72th Avenue rail crossing, where, you know, there's that steep hill, the province has announced some improvements from 216th to 264th along Highway One, which the township of Langley will be... Highway 1, which the township of Langley will be partnering with. And that was an announcement that I went to on a nice rainy day, because they're always on rainy days when you do highway announcements. And part of it is some, some improvements to that, that rail crossing. Can you, is that just, is it in the works, or is it projected to happen at some point, or where is that, where is that right now?
So in terms of the highway widening project itself, that project will look at the interchange at 232th Street. In reference to the railway crossing, there is also a railway crossing of the highway, so they'll be looking at an upgrade to that railway crossing as well, is my understanding, as part of, as they go through the detailed design process for the highway widening. The 72nd Avenue railway crossing is a separate item that is something that the township is looking at making some improvements at that railway crossing. So we're currently exploring that right now.
So that would, if that's approved, that really would negate the 240th designation from 72 to Ralston? Because that's one of the issues, is because of the trucks transiting across that railway crossing.
Yeah, it would still provide an alternative to 232, but, but yeah, that, there is some geometric concerns on 232, so.
Good, thank you. Okay, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Thank you very much for the report. It's very informative and helps, helps to clarify a number of things for me. A couple of questions that I have. The first question is around eliminating the truck routes, sort of through Fort Langley along 88th down to Glover Road and 96th, that section. And what I'm, what I'm wondering is, other than, I mean, since trucks can go there to make deliveries anyways, and are allowed to leave the truck route at that shortest point, I'm wondering what the real benefit is of actually eliminating those truck routes, other than, I guess, the only example I can think of is a truck that's just gonna go right through the fort and not plan to stop. But otherwise, there'd be really no benefit to it, because they can go in there anyways to make their deliveries and then turn around and drive out on any truck route, correct?
Through the, to the chair, one of the benefits, as was stated earlier, was the fact that both the township and TransLink have made it available in written and paper form and digitally, the truck route network. And what you're telling truckers, particularly ones that are not familiar with your road system, is that this is where, if you're doing a long-haul movement on a truck, this is where you would prefer them to be. So by deleting it from the truck route network, you've, you're signaling very clearly to these long-haul truckers that this is where you don't want them to be.
Okay.
I know the distinction is somewhat subtle, but it is, it is a fairly important distinction, is that you're trying to clearly message to the trucking community, and particularly those truckers who are not familiar with your road network, in terms of where do you want them to be and where do you not want them to be.
Right. So I guess then, so you're telling them not to go towards Fort Langley unless they have to?
That's correct.
That's, okay.
I mean, again, harkening back to the, to the figure early on in the presentation, when Albion Ferry was there, yes, it made sense. Albion Ferry isn't there, there's no longer that connection. There's no longer a need to have trucks go along Glover Road to get to Maple Ridge.
Right, okay. All right, that's helpful. So, my second question then was, as we, as we eliminate roads from the truck network, do we, is there MRN revenue that we lose? I know we're gaining some along 216th. Do we lose some by deleting roads from the truck network?
Counsel Whitmarsh through the chair. No, none of the roads that are currently, that are shown to be deleted are currently in the MRN.
Oh, I see. So they're not in the MRN, but they are considered a truck route?
That's correct.
Under our bylaw, okay, all right. And my, my, my final question, because all the other ones I had were answered, this, maybe if we could go to the one with the recommended additions, if you wouldn't mind going to that map. Yes, thank you. So as I'm looking at coming off the freeway on the new proposed 216th, so in the blue, and I run up to 88th, at 88th I could turn left, which is again a truck route. And I'm wondering, I'm wondering why, if trucks, if trucks can go make deliveries anyways on these roads, I'm wondering why we wouldn't recommend the deletion of the 88th through Walnut Grove as a truck route? Being that they can then use 96th, they can still do deliveries down 88th, and they wouldn't then, we wouldn't be then promoting, as you said about Fort Langley, the driving these big trucks right through the center of Walnut Grove if not, if not necessary. They'd only be going there for deliveries, and I'm wondering why that, we couldn't consider that?
Counsel Whitmarsh through the chair. I'm gonna have the two-part answer to that. And you're not allowed to smack me around for the first part of the answer, because it's a typical consultant answer, which was, that wasn't part of the scope of our review, was to look at that part. Having said that, it's my understanding that 88th Avenue between 200th Street and 216th Street, this portion of 216th Street north of 88th Avenue and 96th Avenue between 200th Street and 216th Street are part of the MRN. I believe I'm correct in that, yes. So if council is to, was to direct staff to take a look at that, then, and if that's council's desire, then council has to be aware that then you would be foregoing MRN funding.
Okay. So that, I understand that wasn't part of your scope to look at, but so is that maybe through the mayor to staff or other staff, is that a reason why we might not have considered 88th, or is there other reasons besides financial?
Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, the other consideration is regional connectivity and how that truck route fits in. So it wasn't necessarily a, a consideration for staff to remove or to look at potential removal of, of certain sections, not just because of the, the financial implications, but also because of the connectivity that's so important for the movement of goods, as was mentioned earlier. So it's a two-pronged response. Financial is part of it, and then the, the need and the regional connectivity. If one was to take that argument furthest, I guess, one would do away with, with the truck route network to begin with, or to have, period, and just end up with a provincial, provincial network that accommodates trucks, and everybody else is actually responsible to make the shortest route to their destination.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, thank you for the answer. I guess I just sort of wondered if 88th and 96th were somewhat redundant, because 96th takes you to 200th interchange over the Goldnears Bridge, and, and 88th you can still use to make deliveries and to move goods anyways. And so I just was wondering. So it's, it's helpful, I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. Thank you very much for coming today. It's quite a comprehensive report, I must say. It should be required bedtime reading for anybody with insomnia, if you want to look at all the graphs, just because, you know, the details of the information are a little bit challenging for us lay individuals. I guess I should only speak for myself. But the information provided was very interesting. I did have a follow-up question regarding, a comment regarding the, whether or not, and apparently not, we can preclude trucks coming off any kind of interchange from the freeway. So I wondered if there was any utility in pursuing potentially limiting the weight of the trucks that could come off into a particular area, if that's something that would be permissible, or is that also precluded?
Counsel Arneson through the chair. That's de facto establishing a truck route. So if council was interested in pursuing that, it would still have to be approved by TransLink, and TransLink would like to see the technical justification for a weight restriction.
Okay, thank you. Another question I had, if you could just go back to the multiple account evaluation, slide please. I was interested in the adjacent land use for 216th, and I, you know, I understand in terms of rationality, this is a way to numerically kind of weight different options relative to each other. The one thing, however, that I, I didn't hear anywhere in your presentation, there's environmental exposure, but I didn't hear anything about human health. And that's one of the things that I think has been really underlined by the individuals who back onto that, what would be a truck route then in that. And they've been trying to get that actually, and it has not transpired so far. So, you know, I, I think that in terms of our assessment of this, I think that's an additional consideration, because, you know, sensitive receptors are one thing. If they're ecological, but we're human beings, then I think we, you know, we should have the same status. And, and just, just a couple of other comments. You know, before I was elected, and I was part of a real push, I suppose, from the Fort Langley community, even though I didn't live there, to try and get the truck route taken out of that area, which I think is fantastic. But I, I do find it, and I understand the rationality of putting these different components together, but I do think it dilutes the analysis of the impact on 216th, because that's something that you're adding in a situation where, you know, it's great that you're moving the, the parts around, but I don't think it adequately assesses opportunities to, you know, consider what the impacts are gonna be on that community. So I, I thank you for your presentation, but I'm, I'm not necessarily sure from my own perspective that the scope of the analysis is what I would have anticipated.
Perhaps just following up on that, just to get some clarity, Counsel Arneson had talked about the, I guess, the health concerns of residents along the truck route. Is it fair to say, and you can help me on this, that the addition, that there, that there's more dispersion of vehicles with an additional interchange, that you're gonna have fewer vehicles, actually total vehicles, cars and trucks, going along 88th and 96th Avenue, because now you have another access point to Highway 1? So in effect, you're actually reducing the exposure to other, to folks, maybe you just, I don't know if you looked at that at all, or is there a modeling that shows dispersion of vehicles, because you're not all concentrating on 200th exit?
Mayor Froze, the, we didn't, CTS did not undertake any modeling. It's my understanding that the province has undertaken modeling as part of the 216th Street interchange project. As a professional traffic engineer who's been in the business for over 30 years, that's a fair comment, is that if you provide an additional access to and from the freeway, then you can expect that there would be, with the increase in volume, for example, on 216th Street, you could expect a commensurate decrease on 200th Street, until such time, of course, as land continues to redevelop, particularly south of the freeway. Obviously, north of the freeway, in the Walnut Grove area, there's very, to my understanding, there's not a lot of redevelopment potential left, but obviously to the south, there is quite a bit. And the, you know, providing the additional connection at 216th will facilitate the development of that area.
Counsel Fox.
Thank you. Yeah, the statistics you presented were pretty extensive. I'm glad you read them at night. I tried to read them during the day, and they're, it's, it's amazing. Anyway, certainly, I would have to suggest validates your conclusions, because you got enough of them there, and I didn't quite make it through all, every page of them. But anyway, regardless, it does add the validity piece. I just wanted to, a couple of things. Maybe through you, not to our presenters, but traffic calming, then through you, your worship, to Mr. Seffy, that is something that staff is already undertaking a process to evaluate, in due course?
Your worship, I don't think it would be accurate to say that staff has already taken to account to proceed with, but rather to wait until such time as the interchange has been completed, after which we will see council's direction to proceed with enabled petition or not. It is something that we have discussed before, we presented the idea to council, but it's subject to its own process.
Okay. So, so on 86A, for example, a preemptive traffic calming survey of the individuals that live there would probably be not a particularly strong argument. Statistics would be a better argument on which to base it?
Correct.
Okay. Second question. Two school zones. Now, if you go off the Evans Road exit in Chilowack and go south, there's a school almost right close, and it's a 30-kilometer school zone. Is it possible to reduce the speed limits adjacent to the Colverure and Topham Elementary to 30 kilometers in those directions?
Through our discussions, we have had discussions with the Ministry of Transportation. We have committed to reviewing both of those school zones, we, in accordance with the appropriate TAC or the Transportation Association of Canada guidelines. So that review hasn't been completed to date, to my knowledge. So we will, we will review those in accordance with TAC and base the, the implementation on the appropriate guidance.
Would that come back to council then for, for a decision? I know, for example, and the rationale behind my comment is this, I know, for example, for, on 48th Avenue, where the Christian schools are, council has actually preempted and made it a decision to put 30-kilometer school speed zones in there. Would that be a possibility in this, even though, in this situation, even though it doesn't meet the Ministry of Transportation guideline figures?
To date, I don't know that we have completed the review for those appropriate sections. Of course, council could direct staff with regards to any motion, but staff would want to have an opportunity to take a look at it with the appropriate technical factors under consideration.
So is there a motion on, that you're doing that, or do we need a motion to do that?
Staff are already completing a technical review. We've committed to reviewing that.
Okay. You mentioned, through you to Mr. Gilek, you mentioned 200th Street. Right now, there's one lane going off to the left, and there's two going to the right. Are they putting an additional right lane there, exit? Do you know? What's the plan?
What they're looking at doing is there's a single offbound off-ramp lane, and they're proposing on doubling that, and then it will come to the, the appropriate split at, at the intersection itself. So currently, there's only one lane that exits the highway. They're looking at doubling that exit.
And I think they're also looking not for trucks, but for vehicle traffic at the 202 exit westbound, too. And it's sitting there, it's never been activated, but is that part of the improvements as well?
The HOV on-ramp construction in the eastbound direction is part of the 216th interchange project, along with the highway widening from 202th Street to 216th Street.
Well, that'll take some, some buses and so on off that 200th Street intersection, which will, which, all of which helps in the, in the big picture of things. So, a point here, if I could, on page number, right at the beginning, I have to, it talks about conduct a public information session, and then on page four of our report, it says it's recommended that a consultation process be initiated with the communities affected. So, public information and consultation, two different terms. Where are we at?
Your worship, the intent, unless otherwise directed by council, is to demonstrate the technical findings as part of a public information session. That was the intent. I apologize if the wording is somewhat conflicting, but the intent is to, as I said, demonstrate the findings from a technical perspective to the community and allow, and allow opportunity for questions and answers.
Okay. So the one piece that I think is, is not understood by the community is the fact that even if this was not a designated truck route north from the 216th interchange to 88th, trucks still can use that, because they are actually accessing a truck route, and it's the shortest route to do that. And so that's a point, I think, that needs to be, I'm not suggesting how great an emphasis, but it needs to be a part of the, any information session, because I think it's not an understood element of this particular perspective. So, okay, thank you.
Counsel Qualley.
Thank you, thank you for the report. It was really comprehensive, and unlike Counselor Arneson and Counselor Fox, I was riveted by the entire report, day and night. It was, actually, it was really easy to understand. I did all, understand all the graphs. But thanks, I appreciate the peanut gallery down there tonight, Counselor Fox, or Counselor Long. The presentation- The presentation you gave tonight was really great, and I think if there's an opportunity to deliver this presentation in a very concise manner to the residents, I think it'll make some sense to them as well. I think the good news in some of this, or part of this at least, is that this will take a lot of pressure off the roads in Fort Langley, in, just in the way of wear and tear. I mean, those roads are pretty beat up pretty consistently, and I think having some heavier trucks off there will sort of extend the life of those roads. Am I correct in that? Yeah. So I'm not a traffic engineer with 30 years' experience, like you, Mr. Vilek, but in my head, having the 216th interchange open to trucks and to all transportation, in my mind, the 216th interchange would be used primarily by residential traffic, people going into East Walnut Grove and people trying to access Fort Langley, who right now are using 200th, are driving all the way down to 232 and then coming back. Having better access for residential traffic on 216 will take pressure off of 200th, which will make it more accessible to the trucks that we want to encourage to stay on 216. Is that reasonable, or 200th, rather, to keep more trucks on 200th by redirecting some of that residential traffic to 216th? Is that, am I just imagining that?
Counsel Qualley through the chair. No, you're not imagining it, that makes perfectly good sense. I mean, trucks are looking for the best and most direct route, they get paid by the hour, and they're looking for fast and efficient ways, and in particular for this area, to look, to get into the Port Kells industrial area, or to cross on Golden Year's Bridge to get into Maple Ridge and Pitt Meadows. So, and as I pointed out in the slide early on, in terms of the volumes, you're only talking 3% to 5% of the traffic on the, any given road, is truck traffic. So, you know, 90 to 95% of the traffic is passenger vehicles. The 216th Street interchange, in my professional opinion, is going to represent a fundamental and quantum improvement for residents of the area in terms of getting, shortening their travel time and improving their quality of life, in terms of getting to and from wherever they need to go, whether it's within the township or at other points along Highway One.
So this alleviation of some of the pressure on 200th Street with residential traffic now moving over to 216, there's going to be less idling on 200th Street as well, theoretically, with the expansion of the new lanes. So there's less idling on 200th Street. If the primary vehicles on 216th are residential traffic, there's going to be fewer emissions everywhere in the municipality, so this is better for everybody in the municipality from that perspective, in theory, from idling vehicles and traffic sitting at gridlock, or whatever that would be. So having, you know, the vehicles are so much more efficient, which is why the provincial government eliminated air care, theoretically. So I think the whole community benefits from this addition of the change in truck routes. And so I think, you know, because there's, in your report around adjacent land use, I get you're just talking about that immediate corridor, but I think looking at it holistically, which is what we're doing today, you have to look at the impact in all of the other places, not just here. So is that a fair assessment as well?
Counsel Qualley through the chair. I mean, that, from my perspective, that's the role of council, as the consultant retained by the township to take a look at it, you know, we're focused very much on the specific corridor, so that we can provide council with our best technical input and let council consider all the factors that council believes it needs to consider to make decisions for changes, if any.
Right, okay. Well, I appreciate this report very much. I think it's been really comprehensive, and for me, just not understanding the minutia of your work, for me, looking at it sort of commonsensically, as somebody who drives that road every day, I see tremendous benefits around this. Do you happen to know how long the piece of road is between, I'm sure you do know this, but you may not have it with you, between 88th Avenue and the freeway, the new, like, Highway One off-ramp? I know the total was 14.5 for the whole piece, but I wonder the northern piece from the freeway to 88?
I don't have the distance handy. It would be approximately five blocks, in that it goes from 88th to 83rd, with the eight blocks being a mile, so you're looking at approximately a kilometer.
Better road, okay. Yeah. Okay, thanks very much for that.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
Oh, thank you, Your Worship. Can you go to the, advance that one slide about the money? Because I was curious as to why, okay, there you go, the addition of that section, $302,000. How come there's no additions on the other two proposed additions to the truck route, in terms of major road network revenues?
Certainly. Counsel Long through the chair. The reason why Rollison 240th and 240th Rollison is, are not shown as having MRN revenue, because in our opinion, neither of those roads would qualify for inclusion in the major road network.
Okay, all right. Now, this issue of 240th Street coming off 72nd, Your Worship to staff, what kind of, you know, direction comes from this, or maybe after the information sessions, that can come back? I'll just leave that out there, because I don't want to spend another hour on this, but at some point, I guess that discussion will have to happen, whether that's wise. I mean, I don't know also why they wouldn't fix that train track on 72nd, because it's bad for everybody. So maybe there's some improvements can be made to that regardless. I just have some comments about the report, and I appreciate your presentation and the report, but certainly this revelation that 200th Street is finally going to get some improvements is a real key point here, because everybody wants to get, the trucks want to get to Port Kells. So I think that's something that council needs to be aware of, and staff, and it should, I don't know if it should be in the report or not, but that, more information on that would be very beneficial, I think, to all of us. The second thing is I do take a slight exception to this, to this fact that this delegation sort of started the genesis of this, because I was around before that. The fact that the ferry stopped and that road was no longer a provincial highway is the reason that I think we had to have another look at the truck route. So, you know, I'm just saying that the present, your report seems to indicate that delegations coming forward to council make all the decisions around here, and I don't think that's the case. I think it probably spurred some information requirements from council to say, let's look at the truck routes in general. There was another thing here, and that is the, well, of course, that actually supports the fact that the 216th interchange has been on the books long before this discussion came up in May of 2011. I guess, moving on from here, then, there'll be information sessions and questions and answers, so we'll all be apprised, I think, of those dates, and then, and how we proceed. And ultimately, TransLink is going to have to agree with all this before anything can happen anyway, right?
Correct.
Something that intrigued me, Counsel Fox said that the 30-kilometer mile an hour speed limits, that's already in effect. I was just down on 216th Street today, that's what the speed limit is, so why would we have to impose anything different that's already exists? School zones are all 30 kilometers an hour. Or are you talking about when school's not in session? Is that what we're talking about?
I'd have to double check, but my recollection is that 91A Avenue has a 30-kilometer an hour speed zone on it, and that 216th Street has a school area sign, which would still leave this speed limit at the posted amount.
Well, I hope you pursue that, because it makes total sense that those two areas, and of course, that school has been on the truck route all this time, between 88th and 96th, it's nothing new, it's been there forever. Well, thanks very much. Thank you, Your Worship.
You. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, council, and you yourselves for indulging me. A couple further questions. So the first one actually has to do with the degree to which this informational process will discuss the potential access to residential neighborhoods, if you're putting a truck route through 216, because that's some of their neighborhood concern, is the infiltration of trucks going into their residential neighborhoods.
Okay, go ahead.
So what was committed previously, and what Mr. Seifi alluded to, was that the township had committed to doing some traffic counts both before and after the interchange opens up, so we will be looking at the volume of traffic going into the respective communities, and as part of that, we'll be looking at the classification of vehicles as well, so that information will be available for review post-completion as well. So we'll do a before and after analysis of the, of the traffic in the area, particularly the Forest Hills subdivision.
Okay. Second quick comment, it's a mea culpa. So you're talking about the rationality and how we're irrational and/or rational decision makers. I personally am a very irrational decision maker at times when I'm in traffic, and that's because if I can perceive that there's a blockage or some kind of clog further ahead, I will actually go out of my way so I'm not stopped in traffic. And I think that this could potentially be true in an instance where you're driving along the freeway, and you can see ahead that there is a potential slowdown in an area, and you've just decided, even if you really didn't want to, you'd be taking the alternative exit there. So I think that that's a reasonable assumption, that that could happen. And just one final thing, you know, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about the merits back and forth between if we are increasing interchanges so that we have a reduction in the overall idling of vehicles, but there's actually a lot of evidence that indicates that the closer you are in proximity to an interchange and to that kind of highway infrastructure, the higher your incidence or correlation of disease will be. So I think that we really need strongly to take that into consideration and to try and mitigate as much as we can that health impact on individuals, who prior to this, even if it is a truck route, and even if every single truck that wanted to enter the township could currently find its way there, we're not inviting them to in the way that we're now considering. So I just want to put that on the table.
Yes, you know further questions or comments from council? I want to thank you very much for your very thorough presentation and your answers to all the questions that council has. We are, I'm very happy that you provided this report, and this is something that we're taking very seriously, and council is considering this, it is a change, and something that we do want to make the best decision. So thank you very much. Okay, so now we move on to reports to council, and report F1 is a truck route review. There is a recommendation from staff, and if I could have a motion, please. Counsel Whitmarsh, seconder, can I have a second? Counsel Qualley? And now open up to discussion, Counsel Davis.
Can I ask, pardon me, sorry. Maybe you can help me out here. Can I ask for division?
Sure, yes, you can.
Can we divide A?
A and B?
Yeah, please, could we?
So we need a motion, yeah, so a motion from Counsel Davis, second by Counsel Arneson. Just ask for a show of hands for division. All those in favor, opposed, carried, so we will now proceed with...
Just leave it alone, leave it alone, Charlie, leave it alone.
Oh.
I didn't see enough hands up there, I saw about three hands.
I'll ask for opposed. I asked for opposed, I didn't see an opposed hand, so.
Reposed.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. So Counsel Fox and Counsel Whitmarsh are opposed to division, so the division motion carries. Thank you for that, sorry I missed your hand. Next, I just thought, to be efficient with a late hour, we'd use a show of hands for a motion like that. So now we'll move on, so that the recommendation right now is that council directs staff to initiate the application to TransLink, conduct a public information session, bring forward amendments to the highway and traffic bylaws necessary to incorporate the following modifications. So we'll start with A, and so that is on the table. I'm going to clear the queue right now, is anybody wish to speak to A. Counsel Davis.
Thank you. I am concerned about Counsel Fox's comments about public information session and public engagement. And I am just concerned that we're just going to go tell everybody what we're going to do, other than asking for their input. And maybe through you to Mr. Remen, and just, could you just clarify what actually the difference between an information session is and a public engagement?
Mr. Seifi, can you elaborate on what staff has in mind for the...
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess arguably, there's no difference between the two, so I'll try to clarify and reiterate for council the intent. This has been a long process, Your Worship, of technical analyses, and council has heard from the community, from all sides, staff believes. So the intent is to have a information session, a public information session, an open house, where staff will be present, we will have display boards, we will potentially have, based on today's council deliberations and comments, we could actually have a presentation, slide presentation, to demonstrate the technical findings, to provide the public with the information that that staff, with the help of the consultant, has been able to arrive at. And that's really the intent, to have a public information meeting, a public open house of that nature.
Okay, so will we make it clear, again, I'm sorry, I'm flying on Counsel Fox's, we'll make, we'll tell them about the decision, about the Township of Langley's power versus the DOT on that, yeah, okay.
And it's the authority of Ministry of Transportation highways and Township of Langley's bylaws.
Yeah, and we don't have, we couldn't, could we change the bylaws? So we'd have more power, or we, I understood that from the presentation that we couldn't.
Your Worship, council has the authority to change its own bylaws, which sometimes, in this particular case, are subject to TransLink's approval. That's one thing. The second thing is, the province has override in jurisdiction over provincial highways, and that's the secondary point, that's very important, that the Township of Langley, despite its bylaws, cannot restrict or regulate access to an interchange.
Okay. I, the reason I ask for division is because I feel that there is quite a bit of merit between Fort Langley's, and if we're going, if we can actually, a truck can go in and not be inhibited to a farm, or dairy farm, or not just farming, building a house where there's no truck route, so they can get gravel in and lumber and all that. So I, I think that we can, I think we can improve from the delegation, but however, we also had a delegation that came forward about truck traffic from north of Highway One to 88th, and they brought other, they didn't just poo-poo it, they brought other ideas that would improve it, and we put some money away for, I forget, was it 2.3 million or so? We put a couple million, and I feel that by not having a truck route from north at this point, would give some of the concerns of the residents that live right on that street, and so that's why I'm not going to vote for A, but I am going to vote for B, so.
Thank you. Counsel Sparrow.
I guess mine was just following up on Counsel Davis's question in regards to the difference between a public information session and a public engagement. My view of a public engagement session is you're engaging the public, there's a communication, there's hearing, and there's getting information and giving information. My view on a public information session is providing information to them so that they better understand a decision that has already been made, or that we maybe have not as much control over our decisions that are made from other levels of government. So I understand from Mr. Seifi's answer that that is more what we are going to be doing. I guess my concern is, as was pointed out a few times, is making sure that these, the session is one that provides that information to the, to the residents, where they're understanding the rules when it comes to trucks exiting off of this interchange, and that by this truck route, one-kilometer sort of link, that that being included, or not included, does not disallow trucks from exiting the interchange. And I think that's an important part of what it is we're deciding here tonight, because I don't think that's fully understood. And I think, so if that's what this is, which is directing staff to initiate the application to TransLink, because they obviously have authority over this more than we do, but that this public information session is going to provide all of this technical information, but really break it down into layman's terms of what it is we actually have control over what we can do and what we can't do. So, you know, the township could put traffic calming or other types of installations on this route... this route that may not persuade trucks from going down this route and choose, and have them choose to go 200th, but that we can't put a sign up that says no trucks allowed off of this interchange. And I think that's a really important part of this. So I guess I just want to make that clarity of engagement versus information as well.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So I guess just briefly, there is more than just a nuanced difference between information provision and actually engaging individuals. So I would say one is on the very extreme of just passing information and making sure that people understand what the intention is. And the engagement aspect would lead to an expectation that there was some room to create different outcomes and different options that were being discussed. So I do hope that we're very clear about that when we start the process. And the other thing is that I just wanted to point out, and maybe some counselors are not aware of this, but the MOTI has been very forthcoming in working with the residents who have made themselves available as stakeholder groups. And they have met with that group and they've also met with staff. I think it's important to consider that MOTI, I cannot speak for them, but I think they want to remain engaged in the process because they do see this as a challenge where we have different jurisdictions that are working together to achieve a result that basically is coordinated. And I think from some of the emails that I have received and correspondence indicates a continuing interest in doing that. So I would be most supportive of engaging them as well as part of this process going forward. I think they have expertise, they've expressed an interest, and I do think it would be helpful to our process overall so that we could manage this in, you know, to the best possible outcome, whatever decision is made.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
Well, thanks, your worship. Just picking up on that, perhaps MOTI should be involved with this because I think the explanation and future plans for the 200th Street interchange are paramount here for public opinion, that's for sure. So, and then I think there's been some discussion about what an information session is. In the report, not in the recommendation, but it says very clearly that the information session was to respond to questions and provide additional information as required. So I would hope that that's the intent here. Maybe it can be put into the motion, just to make sure that we're clear on that. That wording where it says to respond to questions and provide additional information rather than just an information session.
I think that's the intent of the information session, so we could include it.
Well, let's put that in. Can I make a motion that that be amended to put in there? And then what about MOTI coming and being part of this?
Invite MOTI? Is Mr. Backen?
And can we get some good slides and presentation boards on 200th Street?
Correct, your worship. They can be invited. The point is this is a truck route analysis of the township levels. They can be attending as, I guess, observers, but they wouldn't have any direct role.
Okay, so, but can we get the information from them about 200th Street and make sure it's clearly and obviously displayed?
I think our staff could, our staff certainly could provide some of that information to that. Correct, Mr. Seffy, so that, you know, it really is important that we have the whole total, you know, total picture. And this report was northwest Langley, it wasn't just 216th, it wasn't just Fort Langley. We can't just take one little piece and not show how it connects.
Well, that's right. And that was going to be my other point, your worship. Even though we've already decided to divide it, you can't really do A without B or B without A, so hopefully.
But the council chose to divide it, but it allows for focused discussion on each one, so I think that's okay.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so do we need a motion for that? Can council, can staff take direction on?
No, let's put it in there.
Okay, so we can maybe add that as a, because it's divided, so at the end we'll just add that motion. Would you prefer an amendment?
I think you need it now because we can't vote on anything without, well, we can.
Amendment is just to insert the words, to respond to questions and provide?
So amendment would be to add the words?
Conduct the public information session to respond to questions and provide additional information as needed.
Okay.
And to bring forward amendments.
Okay. So I'll take that as an amendment. Is there a secondor to that amendment? Counsel Arneson, so open up. So on the amendment, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on the amendment. It carries unanimously. So now we're back to the main motion as amended. Counsel Long, did you have anything else?
And you'll be there to respond to the question.
Yeah, and you. Counsel, anything else? Counsel Qualley.
Thanks. You know, politically, this is a nightmare. This is so ugly politically. We're getting so many emails and truthfully, I'm okay to stand up to the residents and say I have a lot of information. I have been given a ton of good information from our staff, from all kinds of different places. Everybody's been very forthcoming with facts and information. You know, as far as being accused of being uncaring relating to human health issues, that's not real. We all care about that, all of us in the whole municipality. We're being accused of that constantly, of not caring about human health. It is something that's paramount for everybody who works in this municipality and for all of us, I believe, as elected officials. We all care about that. That's why we're doing this job, actually. So I think there's been tons of interaction with the community around this. I think a lot of the residents are never going to be satisfied because they're never going to get the result that they want, which is to leave it exactly as it is today. And so my hope of this information meeting, when it's scheduled, is that it will really be an opportunity, that the residents will actually be open to listening to this and hearing all of the pieces that we heard today and hearing about the questions of jurisdiction and the changes that are coming at 200th Street and what this really means to the whole township. And so I guess my hope is that we can talk about the truck route holistically. And truthfully, I didn't fight division or oppose division because, what's the point? My vote's going to be the same on both of them. So I just really hope that the public information session is valuable to the public because I think we're all doing as much as we can to get the best result here for everybody. But I do realize that not everybody's going to be satisfied and politically, this is gross, really. It's terrible. But as council, we all voted unanimously in favor of this. And so I think we all have to sort of be a little bit courageous to figure out how to move this forward and figure out the best option for the whole municipality, not just less than 1-kilometer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And seeing none, I'm now going to call the question on F1A. And it carries with Counsel Arneson and Counsel Davis opposed. So now we go to F1B, and that's the Fort Langley truck route changes. Any discussion on B? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. And it carries unanimously. We now move on to F2, and this is the revised donation bin policy. Hopefully we can have a shorter discussion on this one, but I think it's, reading through the report, it certainly is, and talking to staff, necessary in making our donation bin policy a little bit more clear for everybody. Counsel Fox moves it?
Motion to extend.
No, we don't need it. We go to 6:30 under the, Counsel Sparrow seconds it. End discussion, Counsel Arneson.
One question. I've been looking into this just a little bit and I realized that there are some safety issues with people being able to get into them. So I'm just hoping that we're able to have supervision over the installation of what would be considered, I guess, the safest kind of receptacle so that it would preclude as much as possible. Nothing is 100% of people being able to get inside them because people can actually die in there. Thank you.
Mr. Seffy is indicating that that's part of the process. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on F2. And it carries unanimously. Move to F3, and this is a long-term debt municipal security issuing resolution. Counsel Fox, second by Counsel Sparrow. Discussion on F3. Seeing none, I'll call the question on F3. It carries unanimously. And we move on to F4, this is Brookswood Furnish.
I'd like to ask, and I'm.
Oh, let me get your mic on. Let me get my on. Okay, there you go.
I'd like to ask, with all due respect to the staff that have been here, it's now 6 o'clock, we have visitors for dinner. I want to spend time on Brookswood. I don't want to be rushed on this presentation. So I'm wondering if we would be better spent to have it as a first agenda item on our next meeting.
So we do have, the meeting does go to 6:30 under the procedural bylaw?
But we do have guests and I do want to spend time with the guests. That's the problem, yeah.
But I think we should go through, we certainly can take, we can go through as much as we possibly can and go till 6:30. We do have guests, I understand, but our meeting does go to 6:30 unless council wishes to move termination early, but we do have a lot of business to do and a busy evening agenda, so.
Well.
I think we can certainly get started on it and if we have to adjourn and move it to another.
Okay, but I'm not going to, I'm going to, you know, this requires a lot of, it's not so much the presentation, it's going to be the questions after. I think we're going to find out, we're going to be as long as we were on the road network up.
Mr. Backen, do you have some?
To clarify, I don't believe there's a presentation. This is an update as to the process and I'm confirming it. However, to deal with those concerns, council may wish simply to vary the agenda and deal with the other items and end with that. So if there's an adjournment, it's a very, well, it's a big issue, but it's one topic.
Hey, we could adjourn to the next meeting. Okay. So I would ask council, and if they want to vary the agenda, a motion to vary the agenda, we'll move straight to correspondence and then go back to F4. And so Counsel Arneson moves to vary the agenda, Counsel Fox seconds it. So I'll just do it by motion and I'll do by show of hands, all those in favor, opposed. It carries unanimously, so we're going to vary the agenda. And we're going to go directly now to correspondence.
So move.
So there's the, moved by Counsel Long, second by Counsel Fox, and I'm going to call, any discussion on G1 receipt? I'll call the question, G1. Carries unanimously. Move on to minutes. We've got Recreation Culture Parks Advisory Committee and Seniors Advisory Committee on H1. Could we have a motion to receive the minutes? Counsel Fox, Counsel Arneson, discussion on receipt. Seeing done, call the question on H1. Okay, that carries unanimously. On H2, there's a recommended motion. Could I have a motion on the recommended motion?
I will, I'll move it.
Okay. Counsel Fox and Counsel Arneson seconds it. I have one quick question. The $2,500 will come out of which fund?
I'm.
Here, let me get.
Thank you. I would like to make the recommendation that the $2,500 come out of council contingency. It's not a budgeted item and it would not fall under any of the grants criteria at this point in time, but possibly next year they could make a grant application. So I would make the recommendation that comes out of council contingency.
That way amendment and with council's approval, if everyone is in favor of that, then we'll just, I'll just take that as an amendment and no opposition to it. Okay, so we'll add that as amendment, that a council contingency. So any discussion on that? Nothing. I'll call the question on H2 as it was amended. And that carries unanimously. Move to H3, and Seniors Advisory Committee recommended motion for a travel parking expenses. Counsel Fox, will you?
I'll move it.
And secondor, Counsel Qualley, discussion on that?
Just quickly, if I could, your worship, just by brief explanation, we've been invited to go there with no costs covered. So as a speaker, it would be, this would be a travel expense via vehicle and then parking expense for the day. This is in Vancouver at the Convention Centre, so if we could cover that again on a council contingency, it would be appreciated. And it may not be needed, okay? It may not be needed. There may be other ways to fund it, but this is a backup.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Sparrow?
Can I just, a question through staff. I assumed that each committee had a little bit of some petty cash that they could use for these types of things instead of maybe using that for their year-end party. Maybe they wanted to put.
Oh, we party hard.
$20 or whatever it is to this. Mr. Backen, looks like he wants to say something.
No, I was kidding. We, there is a small amount, but I believe that that would be below the threshold we're discussing here and may have been already allocated.
Oh, you mean the amount for the parking and gas is?
Sorry, the previous one, sorry. The amount that may be available from that exists. It's a nominal sum that's available, so that could be from that sum, yes, so it need not be from council contingency.
Okay, so can we make, do we need a motion then for this or do we just?
We need a motion, but it need not be from council contingency.
Okay, so that we're approving it, but that they not, that they may pay for it out of their own committee funds if available? Perfect.
That's right, and that's.
I haven't received a budget.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Ditto.
Okay, so ditto with that. We will now call the question on H3. And it carries unanimously. And so now we move to items from prior meetings. This is I1, it's obviously by our Recreation Centre Pool Tank Remediation Project. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Sparrow, Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion on this. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Oh, sorry. Counsel, vote, and you want to, did you want to?
Well, I'm trying to vote.
Oh, well, I thought you wanted to speak.
No, I'm trying to press the button.
Okay, now you can vote. I thought you wanted to speak to it, sorry.
I'm sorry.
You said you wanted to vote, so you want to speak to it?
No, you know what? I'll vote.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm ready to vote.
He's hungry.
Okay, so I've called the question and take the vote. Okay, that carries unanimously. Is there, is there other business? We have the Township of Langley Fire Friday's local 4550 joining us a little bit later. And is there any other business? Do we need a motion for that or nothing? No, it's just information. So no other business, now we go back to F4. I'd like, I'd like to point out to council that there is an open house planned for May 16th, and so we do need to receive this, at least receive it if there's discussion. We certainly can defer that discussion to the next meeting if there's questions, but I'll take a motion on this right now.
Move to receive, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Long moves it, Counsel Fox seconds it. Is there any discussion on F4? Any questions? Counsel Arneson.
I'm looking at the clock. How long do I have? Thank you. So I'm just wondering, practically speaking through yourself, mayor, to staff, what opportunity would we have if it weren't today, prior to May 16th? Would there be any for us to raise some conditions or points of interest to council prior to that meeting date? So subsequently, what will happen?
Your worship, prior to the meeting date, which would be the 16th, again, that's for public information. This process still continues with there having to be an introduction of bylaws, a public hearing and then the final adoption. So there's fair ways yet to go. Our goal, however, is still being to have that completed by the end of July. The option would be now or to adjourn this matter to, subsequent to the regular meeting this evening, prior to the public hearing and continue the discussion. Again, this is for receipt with much more, many more miles to go.
And just to add to that, the process for the public, this is really to keep council informed of what staff are doing. And just to reiterate what Mr. Backen says, there's certainly lots of time for council to put amendments, once we've completely heard from the public, which will carry on on May 16th, is that we still have lots of opportunity to make changes, amendments and whatever, all the tools that we have in our toolbox, so hopefully.
Okay, thank you, but just a point of guidance then. If I wanted to make an OCP regarding the draft plan as it is, would I be well advised to do it now or should I just wait?
Just need a bit more information, so to make an amendment to the OCP?
Make an amendment to the OCP? No, actually, it's having to do with a policies, having to do with tree protection.
Oh, enhance or increase policies. That could be done anytime from between now until prior to completion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Fox.
Yeah, I had a particular question related to, and if I could through you, to our consultant and staff. The map that's on page 85 here, which is page 70 of the report, the preliminary draft report, it coincides with a map that's on page 84 or page 69. And it shows a commercial area, 32nd Avenue and 200th Street. And I'm wondering if that is the definitive location moving forward. When I went to the open house, there was ABC, concept ABC. And one of the major differences with ABC was it kind of moved in a clockwise kind of context. This being, I think, close to what A was and then B was sort of down and C was over to the west side of 200. So where are we at relative? Is this the comprehensive outcome? Is this the way it's going?
Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, worship. I guess just a quick point of clarification regarding the slides that were presented, that Counsel Fox just referenced, concepts A, B, and C, they were not intended. referenced, concepts A, B, and C, they were not intended as, as options, if you will, but rather actually exactly what they said, which is concepts. What I'm saying by that is that certain aspects of each one of the concepts was to be, could have been taken out and, and used in, in ultimately the option, which was, which is, what, what's happening right now. In other words, aspects from each one of those concepts have been taken and put into the, the current preferred land use plan. I don't know if that answers the, the question that Counsel Fox had, or, or not, but I believe the reference was to this map?
Yeah, so you can see the, the red area there, I'm talking 32nd and 200th, it's on the northeast side, with the higher densities around that area. One of the concepts I liked was with that more on the southwest side, keeping the more, the commercial area over on that side, and keeping most of the higher density in that side, and along the 200th Street corridor, and making some of that area there yellow. So switching, I guess, west and east, I guess, in that. And, and so I'm just wondering how consequential this map is, if this is it, and this is what we're kind of moving forward for, the public information session, or what?
This is it, your worship. This is the map that we're proceeding with the public, with the last public open house with on May 16th, which will subject to fine tuning today by council, and subsequently fine tuning by, as part of that, that discussion, or that, that open house, would form the basis of the bylaw that will be presented to council subsequently, currently projected for early June.
Okay.